Okay, so are you going back downstairs then?
Yep.
Given the Pezzy who is seemingly doing the uh staring into the painting that you see in Ferris Bueller. Except it's just the wooden wall.
Sorry.
You're doing the same.
I move my camera but not my figure. So I'm looking at wherever we're supposed to be looking at, just not the Pezzy.
I think I'm gonna make a mistake.
Um, okay, as you, as you descend, oh my god, please do, that would be great. Um, as you descend the uh, the stairs, you hear the ruckus of an upset town meeting. Um, and Doctor Jangles will say, "Okay, okay, one at a time please." And then he sees you guys and he waves you over and he says, "Uh, excuse me, uh, mayor of the town, chief of police, uh, chief tax collector. Um, the people have some uh, have some pressing questions they wish to ask you, could you come up to the front?"
Yep.
And uh, and you know, help us with this?
Yeah, hopefully some people will declare some taxes.
Bitch, move out the way, damn. People are rude.
Uh, you can tell that Doctor Jangles is quite exasperated, you're not sure what sort of questions he's already answered. Um, but uh, yeah, you get the idea that he's not having a good time.
Hey, what's up?
Um, so one of the people from the cloud, uh, from the crowd puts their hand up. Um, and says, um, so now that uh, now that they uh, now that we don't have many people in our town, I'm very one uh worried that we might get some immigrants from other towns. What if we get people from Stonedale or Icedale or god forbid Daledale? Do you really want these people in our town?
Bro, that sounds racist, get the fuck out. Who are you? What's your name?
We don't want you in our town.
Yeah, we, yeah, go ahead, leave.
Get the fuck out.
Um, Doctor Jangles said, "God damn it racist Greg, get out of our fuck, get out of this fuck, get out of, get out of my town."
I, I have two rats.
Racist Greg.
I have two rats, can I get them out by throwing one of the rats out? I'm gonna find someone else. Nineteen.
Okay, as uh, as um, the man turns to leave, he does get a rat to the back of the head. Um, one of the, one of the other people towards the back, uh, towards the back of the group says, "I adopted a rat as a son and one of your dogs ate it." Uh, what's the process for suing you for that?
Hold on, why do you wanna sue us? Cause a random dog ate your rat son?
No, no, it's one of your police dogs, it ate one, it ate my rat son.
Well, that's your rat's season?
Well, that's not really suing us, that's filing a complaint with the department and then there'll be an internal investig- or an external investigation and then uh.
No, 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 I don't want that shit, I don't want any of that. I want to sue you because my rat son is dead, how do I do that?
Well, we don't have a judicial system, Karen.
Yeah.
Figure it out.
Also, do you not, do you not actually care about your rat son? Are you just trying to get money out of us?
Right, it doesn't sound like, cause I thought you would be asking for us to pay for his funeral or something.
Yeah, like, I thought you were gonna discuss this.
Point, don't bring my rat son in here, I'm in mourning.
This is about your rat son.
Bonehead, throw the other rat at her.
It's about me suing you.
We need to follow though. Hey, can somebody pass me the first rat?
Uh, the, the first rat is, you, okay, do a perception check for me.
Hey, that's not gonna be good. Uh, six.
Um, you notice that one of the uh, one of the police dogs in the background uh, has the end of a tail sticking out of its mouth and it sucks it in like it's spaghetti.
Hey, wait a minute, was your rat son just eaten?
No, he was eaten earlier today.
Okay.
Guys, I don't think we've been feeding the police dogs.
Oh, that's a good point, well, we have had a lot of rats running around.
Evidently.
I thought they just went to go do their own thing.
Yeah, like, we've been paying them.
But they've been eating rats rather than people, so that's pretty good.
Yeah, that explains why we don't have a rat problem anymore though, so I mean, it kinda worked out.
Another person puts their hand up and says, "Um, speaking about a rat problem, I'm not sure if this is the right time to bring this up. Um, but the rats have started mugging people now."
Like, with, with a knife?
Yeah, with a knife.
Do y'all know how to fight?
One of them yesterday was in my kitchen with a ma- with a knife in its mouth and it said that it wanted my money.
How did it say it wanted your money if it had a knife in its mouth?
Well, I mean, it was mouthward, but that's definitely what they said.
So these rats are talking now?
Yeah. I'm gonna pull the rat out from my room, bitch, you son of a bitch, you've been holding out on me. Oh my god.
It was, it was a lot larger than that rat and it had uh, it had a shirt on.
Well, that might have just been a guy.
I, was he, was he orange? Was he orange?
What? Was he orange?
Little hat? Yeah, was the rat orange and did he have a little hat?
I wasn't a rat and I don't mug people, I steal from them, okay?
How did you know I was talking about you?
Because I'm the only orange thing that could be seen as almost rat-like, at least small like it.
No, it was definitely, it was definitely a rat. Um, okay, uh, some, someone else, um, someone else puts their hands up and says uh, "In these troubling times where our children and small races are being kidnapped and now we're being threatened by rats, should I begin to worry?"
Yes, very much so.
Yeah, I, I think you should have been worrying, why do you have to wait to ask us if you need to worry?
Like, you can full-on freak out, it's okay.
Um, one of the skeletons, one of the skeletons in the crowd looks over at the uh, looks over at the, the person who just asked that question. Um, and says, "You know, we can just make more orphans."
Yeah, exactly, like, I don't see what the problem is.
Um, the, the lady, the person who asked the original question uh, looks back at you and says, "Okay, if you do make more orphans, what are we going to do with them? Are we gonna keep them in our houses? We live there."
Where, where do you keep your orphans?
I don't have any orphans.
Well then, why are you worried about it?
Okay, so are you telling me I shouldn't worry?
You should worry about everything but orphans. Don't worry about orphans, they're the one thing you don't worry about.
Okay, okay, thank you for clearing that up.
Y'all are Wait, I like whisper this to Doctor Jangles, was like, these people are fucking dumb.
Uh, Doctor Jangles just nods at you. An elderly lady at the back of the crowd says, "Um, I found a sandwich in the road yesterday and I want to know why it didn't have mayonnaise."
Did you eat it?
Yes, of course I did, it's a free sandwich, why didn't it have mayonnaise?
Wait, did it have turkey? Did it have turkey and lettuce and some bacon?
Yeah.
That was my sandwich.
Why didn't it have mayonnaise?
Yeah, you said you ordered it with.
Mayonnaise, like spicy mustard. You didn't like the spicy mustard?
Uh, it didn't have any spicy mustard on it, it didn't have any condiments, it was very.
I don't think that was my sandwich, I'm gonna load that shit up with spicy mustard.
No, I remember you were yelling at them for not putting spicy mustard on it and you threw it in rage and then climbed over the counter and threatened him with his life if he doesn't get you a new one with spicy mustard.
Is he in here? I look in the crowd, is that dude who made my sandwich wrong in here?
Yes, he is, he's at the very back, he looks very sheepish.
Hey, that's the dude I stole all that spicy mustard from.
This guy here.
Is there a bunch of spicy mustard pouring out from under your pillow at home?
I have put it in their bed.
Well shit, if we had spicy mustard at home, I wouldn't have thrown away the sandwich.
There's like three crates.
Maybe you can still get it back from her.
Hey lady, you still have that sandwich?
No, I ate it. I told you, I ate it.
But it doesn't have any condiments, you're just eating a dry sandwich, get out.
I was hungry and our only other option is rat.
Bro, I had to kick you out of this camera for that, that's weird.
Do the rats come with spicy mustard?
They can.
It's an extra, it's an extra dollar for spicy mustard on rats, it's not worth it.
A dollar? Are they, a dollar, oh, fuck.
Wait dude, you are robbing people.
Fifi is incredibly confused, what the fuck is a dollar?
One gold.
Gold coin, one gold.
Yeah, the gold, an entire gold. That's like a week's salary.
Wait, no, no, a gold is ten dollars, I think a silver is a dollar.
Okay, a silver, that.
What's a bronze?
Um, a penny?
Okay. It's a weird financial system, not heard of that before.
Well, actually, the real D and D financial system is ten coppers for one sil- silver and ten silvers for one gold and ten in gold for one platinum.
Yeah, it goes up and down by tens.
Okay, so it'd be ten cents.
I guess a copper would be ten cents.
Yeah, that tracks, that works. So, uh, one silver is still far too much.
Yeah, that's ridiculous.
Um, someone else, another elderly person from the crowd says, "Uh, speaking of sandwiches, do you think this will affect next week's fall picnic?"
There's a picnic?
The invasion? Maybe.
I really don't think we need to be trying to plan a picnic right now. Like, did y'all see the giant spider web? Why has there not been any question about the giant spider web? Second of all, half of, half of y'all kids are missing, not a single question about your children.
We will, we will come to terms with that, I'm more worried about the fall picnic.
Yeah, we can make more kids, we can't make more picnics in the year.
Exactly, there's only one fall per year, only one. Um, and then.
Well, you only have one child.
Doctor Jangles says, "Uh, yeah, I think unfortunately we'll probably have to uh, to cancel the, the fall picnic, I don't think uh, I don't think it's a good idea to have, to have one, you know?" Um,
Yeah, of course, if the kids aren't, if the orphans aren't there, who's gonna cater it?
Yeah, that's very true.
The main course. Wait, do we eat kids?
No.
Oh.
Um.
Well, I think you went silent very quickly.
Right, like, are you thinking about it? Like, do you want to start eating children?
Or, or has this happened before?
I thought that was weird.
Instead, it's, it's not so much, it's not so much a silence of thinking, it's more a silence of sadness. And the Naked Orc guy, uh, the, the bartender for the Naked Orc, the Naked Orc. Um, he put, he takes his hat off and puts it over his chest and says, "In these very difficult times with this very horrible news, I think it's only fitting that uh, that we do a special offer at the Naked Orc for the next two hours, albeit it's fifty percent off."
Shit.
Oh fuck.
Okay, can, can we go stop the war after the next two hours?
And um, af- after saying that, there seems to be like a flo- a uh, small chatter of approval. And practically everybody gets up and uh, begins to walk towards the Naked Orc.
Yay. Can I, can I use, can I use misty steps to get to the bar first?
Like, who are the people who stay behind?
Um, after a few seconds, they also turn to leave. Apart from, um, apart from, you realize, Pearl.
Oh, hey Pearl. If it's, if Pearl didn't leave, I'd stay behind, I shouldn't.
Yeah, I'm just gonna make that small on.
I forgot about Pearl, if Pearl, I wouldn't leave if Pearl was there.
I think you're just gonna drop at everyone's orders.
Well, I have to ask Pearl first.
Um, Pearl comes up to Unipussy and she says, "Um, I actually think I might have some info- information on what's happened to all the children." Um,
Oh great.
I think it might, I think that the lizard teacher might have had something to do with it. Um, I had to stop him from eating two children last week. Um, and now he's disappeared. So I think if we can, if we can find him, that's um, that uh, that's probably a good place to start.
Well, you just had to stop him from eating them, right? Like, it's a bit of a presumption to just assume, cause he's a lizard person, that he's working with dark forces.
Well, no, it's more, I've had to stop him from eating children in the past and now throughout this whole thing, he's gone missing.
Oh, okay, I guess that is.
Yeah, we should probably look for him.
Yeah, I, I trust you Pearl.
Um, and.
I completely and explicitly trust you and that will never change. And I, I believe in my herd of hers that there is no chance that you will ever betray us.
She nods and she says, "Thank you sir, I do try my best."
It'd be really convenient if they exploded into a pile of rats.
No, but what does happen is um.
Didn't get snatched up, isn't she a small race?
Huh?
Yeah, that I.
I'm surprised Pearl didn't get snatched up, isn't she a smaller race?
Yeah, she is.
Suspicious.
Yeah, I, I was, that's kinda what I was going for with this. With the statement there.
Ah.
Yeah, you do notice, um, you do notice that uh, do we, would you like to roll a perception check there? Or investigation check or whatever?
I, I was being a jackass, but Bonehead does legitimately mean that.
Aw, okay.
He would be shattered if Pearl ever betrayed them.
Um, as this conve- as this conversation finishes, uh, there's a flash of light uh, like the one that, uh, that you saw just a few minutes earlier before you fought the swarm of rats. Uh, before Milton appeared. And uh, an arrow drops down from the ceiling, smashes into the floor at your feet. Uh, and there appears to be a letter attached. Pearl, uh, as this happens, she jumps back and she clutches her chest. Uh, and she, she, oh my god, what was that?
Holy shit, does she clutch her pearls?
Yes.
Oh my god.
So you now have a, an arrow at your feet with a letter attached to it.
Which one of us can read again?
I can. What's it saying?
Okay, so do you, do you open the letter?
Yeah.
Okay, um, on the letter, um, it says, um, "We have kidnapped" Does the lizard, sorry, sorry to interrupt here, does the lizard teacher have a name?
Did you give him a name?
Yeah, I don't think he gave him a name.
Okay, um, it, okay, it says, um, uh, "We have veneer in our, uh, in our clutches. We will take ransom for him. Five hundred gold, come to this address." And it's got an address for a place called, uh, for a place um, called Rottenwood.
Sounds like a very nice place.
I mean, they can keep him, but we need to get some answers and that's the only address that we have.
He's the neurosurgeon, we need him as a teacher. We, we literally traded a soul to hell in order to spare his so we could have him to tutor some of the students that were falling behind.
Uh, Doctor Jangles frowns.
Do you remember the guy who was pretending to be the shopkeeper?
Oh yeah.
Yeah, the one I accidentally sent to hell by telling him to go to hell.
Mm-hmm.
Oh yeah, I did say I was gonna be more careful with my powers after that.
And you have been.
Oh, okay, that's good. I haven't meant to be, but that's good.
Doctor Jangles frowns at you, uh, Bonehead, and says, um, "We might want to look into some other teaching opportunities if this uh, veneer man has uh, has tried to eat two children already." I'm, I'm sure I can uh, I'm sure I can find someone to employ.
Well, the internal investigation hasn't been completed yet.
Okay, after it's completed, I'm, I'm sure I can find uh, some new uh, some new people.
Do you think you can beat a neurosurgeon and disturbing artist? Sure.
Uh, potentially, maybe people who actually have teaching degrees?
Well, he has a teaching degree. He's got a bachelor's.
Ah, okay, maybe people who haven't uh, tried to murder children in the past?
Yeah, well, that's a fair assessment, yeah. So, are we gonna go and save him or?
Well, we, we don't have to, well, we do have to save him, but I just want more answers than trying to save him, so I think we should just pull up.
Yeah, alright.
Um, okay, so currently Fifi's in the bar.
Yeah, that's why he hasn't said anything, he would have said a lot if he was there, but instead he's drowning his troubles.
Ah, and look at that, Felix has rearranged all of the bar peop- uh, all of the people in the bar, so they are facing towards the tables.
I think that's a great thing and it helps keep immersion.
That's really cute.
It's adorable.
Um, but while we're walking out of town, can we pick Fifi up from the bar?
Should we take our mounts?
Do you know where Rottenwood is?
Nope. I just thought you were gonna change the map and we were gonna be there.
No, I have a plan.
Oh no.
So, uh, Pearl says, "Oh, um, so to get to Rottenwood, you uh, go uh, down towards uh, Tiny Wood, then turn right up towards uh, Rook. If you get to the fruit lesbians, you've turned, you've gone too far. You turn left at the turning before the fruit lesbians."
For a landmark now.
Until you see the scary tree with the face, then you take five steps back, turn right and go for about two hundred steps. Uh, and then it should be there."
Is, um, is Rottenwood inside of like, there's a circle of trees and then doorways that look like various uh, images, like a, a tree and a pumpkin and a turkey? And they're behind one of those doors?
No.
Oh, okay.
I don't know what you're talking about, sorry. Um, if my, if my directions are too uh, too difficult, uh, too difficult to understand, um, I know that the post office sells maps to uh, to Rottenwood.
Oh. Well, Pezzy, do you think you'd be able to remember all that?
Um, most likely not, but I know that we're supposed to take a second turn at the fruit lesbians, I feel like we can just ask the fruit lesbians if we get lost.
Uh, we could just get a map and make it easier. Plus, um, I can't remember where the nymph four G forest is and I would like to avoid going that way, need be.
Yeah.
Just, I, I know one of us, I won't name names, but has a little bit of a problem.
Pearl interjects and goes, "What's wrong with the nymph forest? I go there every Thursday."
Nothing's wrong with it, it's just we're on a schedule. Sorry, you were saying?
Yeah, sure, you go for the bread.
I, it explains all the yeast infections.
That is disgusting.
You put it out there.
Right.
Like a nymph with red.
Uh, where do we get the map from?
Okay, so I, uh, at the post office.
Okay, which building is the post office?
I think it's this far one.
Yeah, this one here.
Oh, the one we don't go into?
Can I grab?
No, I remember this place, I had to get a package and he I'm not going there. I'm not going in there, Bonehead.
Alright, come on Fifi.
Okay.
We need a map.
Um, you go into the post office, no one is there because they're all at the pub.
Uh, do you know where the maps are?
Um, you do see, although I, um, although we have not put it in the game because I didn't want to crash the game, uh, along one of the wa- along this wall here, there is a uh, a, a rack with an assortment of uh, assortment of maps. Um, one of them, you, you find the ones for Rottenwood. One of them is uh, very cheap. Um, but upon closer inspection, uh, it doesn't really uh, it doesn't really have very much detail, it just has like the general area of where Rottenwood is. Um, and there's another one which is a lot more expensive, at least double the price, which has, um, a lot more detail, it's a lot more detailed, it tells you where the mountains are, it tells you exactly where Rottenwood is. Uh, and then there's a third one which has a rock attached to it. Um, and as you're looking, uh, one of the post office people comes in uh, a little bit tipsy from the bar, but obviously they've realized that somebody should be at the post office just in case they need it. Uh, and he sees you looking at the maps and he says, "Oh, the, uh, those ones of the, um, tho- those maps are great, they come with a uh, Stone of Far Speech and it's like a celebrity tells you where, like, where to go, they're amazing, I've heard they're coming out with the Sir Shiny one, I'm so excited."
He sounds wonderful and not infuriating at all, um, what, what celebrity is on this particular Stone of Far Speech? Is it Taco?
That'd be great, we should have done Taco. That one you've got is for Dritz Stowren. Uh, but I've heard they do, I, I've heard that you can order them and they come with all different sorts of voices. I, I'm ju- I'm really, really excited for the Sir Shiny one, I, I I've never heard him speak before, I'm so excited to get a Stone of Far Speech that has his voice on.
Have I ever heard of Dritz Stowren?
Pardon? Sorry, I didn't.
Have I, have I ever heard of Dritz Stowren before?
History check.
Okay. If Dave, do you want a history check?
Yeah, would you do a history check? I don't know, I don't remember who it is. Felix.
That's a six.
Oh, no idea.
You don't know?
I, I asked the, um, the main guy. The shopkeep.
Who the fuck is he?
Uh, I'm guessing the shopkeep keeper says, um, or other, like, Fifi's here, so he'll just go, uh, I don't know, some dumbass, something about Icedale, I think, and other places. Um, he has a cat that he rides. I think that's it.
Oh, what's he famous for?
Uh, hundreds of years of adventures and quests. Generally being a kinda great guy. He's like famous in party as well, I think.
I'm more of a storybook reader.
The, the post office guy butts in and says, "What do you mean some guy? He's amazing. I literally have a signed portrait of him in my room. He was like my idol growing up, I love him so much."
Can we see it? Can we see it?
No, no, I'm not laying you into my house. It's like, it. So, sorry, no, it's, um, sorry, yeah, um. Where, where is it that you guys are going?
Where are we go? I, I lean out the door, Napezi.
We're going to Rotwood.
Thank you. We're, we're going to Rotwood.
Do we need to take a number?
Rotwood? Uh, do you mean Rottenwood?
Uh, hold, hold on, Napezi. Do you mean Rottenwood?
Yeah, that's what I meant.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, we mean rotten.
Oh, yeah, um, I've actually got a, uh, I've actually got a parcel going out there. Um, it was supposed to leave earlier today, but obviously because of, um. You know, because of all, because of everything going on, it, we, we skipped the delivery, um. I can, I, I can lend you our cart. It's got a map in it. Um, if you just take the, uh, take the package down. Um, yeah, free, free of charge, map free of charge.
Right? Does it still have the celebrity, uh, voice actor stone?
Uh, I can give you one with the celebrity voice actor stone.
Yeah, absolutely.
Cool, okay, yeah, sure. Brilliant. Oh my gosh. I was so worried that I was gonna have to do that myself and have to stay late. You know, like late nights, walking through to Rottenwood, that's a recipe for disaster. Especially with all the spiders and frogs in the forest.
It's also not a good idea to drink in adventure, you know?
Yeah, yeah, right. I mean. I, I know I shouldn't have drunk her. I know I shouldn't be drinking. I'm on the clock and everything, but it's half price. I can't say no to that. I'm.
Yeah, I know, but.
Yeah, they're asking a lot of us, you know? It's, it's really stressful working here. I went earlier. Earlier this week, I had a dude set fire to my bench and yell at me for like five minutes. It was terrifying.
Wow, they should be arrested. Oh, actually, we have the chief of police outside. Do you want me to go and get them and you can give them the description?
No, no, I al- I already gave the description to one of the dogs and he just laughed at me.
Oh, well, that's not good either. Are you sure? So that seems like a pretty big internal problem there. Like, I could just go grab him, you, literally right outside.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I mean, sure. That'd be great.
I'd go back out, Napezi.
What?
Can you come in here for a minute? We have somebody who has a complaint about one of the police dog.
Ah, did you have another rat son? I, I walk in. Look ma'am, the police department is not responsible for the dogs getting confused on whether or not it is a rat son. Rat or an eaten rat.
Uh, I, that, that's not what, that's not what it was about, um. I, I think I'm fine actually, thank you. It, it's fine, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, he's right here, literally the highest authority, like you can just. Like nobody's above him, like nobody can give him any kind of shit for anything, like so if you have a problem, this is the guy you go to.
Okay, um. I reported a crime. Um, I, I reported a crime to one of your police dogs. And your police dog just laughed at me.
Oh, well, that's no good. You can give me the report. What happened?
Yeah, it's not awful, Napezi. Especially considering that this guy's so cool. I mean, uh, once I had to walk in and take a ticket and it said like one hundred and seven. And he said, don't worry about it. I got you, mate. Isn't he nice?
Um, I, uh. I don't wanna cause any trouble. I'm, I'm, uh. It, yeah, hit, just, just take, take the map, take the, just. Yeah, delivery to Rottenwood, thank you.
Shouldn't we be getting paid for this a little bit, do you not think? Especially considering we were doing a delivery for you.
Getting paid with a celebrity voice.
That is not payment, that is oppression.
Um, he said, oh, the, uh, the man taking the delivery will be giving you, um, seventy-five gold. Um, as a, uh, well, basically a tip for the delivery. Uh, but I mean, I, I suppose I could give you, um.
Seventy-five gold?
He rummages around under the, uh, under the counter. And so, oh, I could, I could probably give you another twenty-five gold, uh, to even it out to a hundred.
Yep, I'll take that.
It's very generous of you, thank you.
I, I, okay, would you like it now or when you get back?
I don't know. I think we need it now. I mean, this table looks awful flammable. Wouldn't you say, Napezi?
It sure does.
Uh, o- okay, yeah, yeah, sure. You can take it now. You can take it now.
I wink at the clerk.
He, he is very uncomfortable.
And you know what? You're so nice. If there's ever any kind of problem with this store. We're going right, right to Chief of Police, right here, Napezi. They'll take care of it. You don't gotta worry about a thing. They will be on the clock watching this place, like nothing happens here without their knowledge.
Like a hawk.
Exactly.
Right, okay, so, thanks for that, thanks.
You're welcome.
They're leaving, Bonehead's just like, he was so nice. Okay, so Bonehead, um. Would have hollowed out the back since comment is undead. Would have hollowed out the butt part of the spider.
You might wanna climb that cart.
For trunk space. So, can we put the package in comments ass? That can be our trunk space.
Uh, you can try. Would you like to do a strength check to see if you can, uh, if you can pick up the package? Which is currently in the cart.
Ooh, that's not good. Uh, seven. Or wait, is that an athletic check? Oh, no, I'm not a fighter anymore, never mind.
Wait, how big is the package?
Yeah, seven.
Um, the package is roughly twice the size of Fifi.
Oh, so it's like, uh. Is it like a chest then? Or is it like a crate?
Um, it's, it actually looks quite ornate. It's, um. Red leather and gold, uh, with like a gold trim. And it has like six locks on it.
Oh, I'm gonna be riding back here with this.
Alright, I closed the butt of the spider. Actually, Napezi, do you think you could lift that into, uh, comment here?
Um, yeah. Wait, like. Get him up, like, get him from up here?
Oh, uh, comment.
Uh, could you do an animal handling check?
Uh, fourteen.
Oh wait, should we question one of these nevergnomes?
They're dead.
I could bring one back to life, but I think that would take the soul fragment that was freed and put it back inside of him, so I don't think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Ooh, okay.
Uh, fourteen for the animal handling check, did you say?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay, um, comment scuttles down. Oh no, I can't move him.
He's locked, you gotta unlock.
He's locked, ah. Comment very ungracefully scuttles down.
Good boy. Can I give him a scratch underneath his pincers?
Wait, can comment get, um, Bronson down?
Uh, do an animal handling check.
Let's see, let's see. Animal handling, oh, that's a three.
Oh, no, he, um, you ask him, you ask comment to get Bronson out. Uh, and comment hisses at you.
I, I pat him on the head and say, it's okay. You can, you can let him down. He'll be safe.
Um, he goes back up the web. And, um, he actually swaddles Bronson a little bit more.
Oh. Oh, I think this is like when spiders adopt frogs as their pets.
Huh.
Maybe if I call him down while he's waddling him, it'll bring him down with him.
Okay.
Can, can I try calling him now that he's holding, uh, Bronson?
Um, he lovingly, uh, sticks Bronson back on the web before coming back down.
Hey, can you go get him and bring him down, please, and thank you?
Can you roll a animal handling check?
Uh, ooh, that's good, eighteen.
Yeah, okay, um. Oh, hang on, I'm trying to unlock the correct thing. So he scuttles up and he un, unswaddles Bronson. And Bronson just falls to the floor and he's like terrified for a second, but he's fine.
Boy. Okay, I'm gonna open up his ass so that Napezi can put the package inside.
Oop, put it in there.
Uh, could you do a strength check to see if you can get out?
Okay.
Should we just hook it up?
That is a s- six. Yeah.
Oh, yeah, you can't lift it.
Damn it.
You can't lift it.
Well, can I get on the other side and help to lift it and, um, give them advantage?
Okay.
Do I roll another check since, uh, Bonehead is helping?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, that's better, twenty-one. I'd say that's better.
Yeah, together you manage to lift it and you get it inside, um, comment's ass. But comment does seem very uncomfortable and weighed down by this huge gold box.
In, in a way that's gonna affect his movement or?
Um, yeah.
Oh, okay, we might wanna actually put this on the cart then.
Yeah.
Alright, at least we can, comment can help us get it there.
Yeah, dibs riding on the horse, not the giant spider.
Sorry, what was that?
Dibs riding on the horse, not the giant spider.
Okay, so are you hooking Bronson up to the cart?
Yeah.
Okay, can you roll an animal handling check?
Five.
Um, Bronson is very unsettled by the events of, uh. By the events, um, and he is not very, he is not. He, he's not really happy to be tied up to a car at the moment. Um, and he's got.
Hold on, let me check my inventory. I think I have like a little something, something for him. Can I give him some dried fruit for my rations?
Could you roll for, uh, advantage then? So roll animal handling again.
It is. Another six.
Dang.
You too, guys.
Let's pretend it's sixty.
Wait, wait, Fifi tries to like saddle ho- tries to get the horse and the. Thingy.
Yeah, you can roll with it.
Do you wanna do a animal handling?
Yep, animal handling.
Well, that's happening. Can I just have comment back up to the cart and dump out the, uh, the box inside?
Ah, that's a D twenty.
What's happening?
Sorry, Heidi, go ahead.
Oh, I, I was just asking, while this is going down, can I just have comment back up to the cart and so we can. Instead of having to lift it out, he can just sort of dump it inside the, uh, the cart?
Yeah, okay.
Oh, is there a splurge noise? Like that. Like a splat.
Would you like to see if you, would you like to see if you could, um, attach comment to it?
Yeah, sure, if, if everyone's okay with that.
Yeah, sure. Although I'm a bit iffy about teleporting spider taking the, uh.
Um, what am I rolling?
Uh, animal handling, to see if he'll accept a harness.
That's an eleven.
Uh, yeah, that works. I was hon- honestly, I was going for a check of ten.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, comment is hooked up now.
If we ever, um, need to go across a ceiling or, or a wall or something, we can always just. Wrap the wheels in spider web and then we can just go, go off-roading.
Oh my god, that is such a good idea. Yeah, you should definitely do that. Yeah, so, um. That's the end of the Saford bit.